The nineteenth, please stand for our invocation led by Edward Conick, Public Safety Chaplain for the Mobile Police and Fire Rescue Department. And remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
It's been a blessed day, this following Easter. We thank God for this day, and we thank God for all our many blessings. And we ask God to bless us during this time. For the City Council will give them the wisdom and knowledge with compassion and love to do the common good for all citizens of Mobile. We ask your blessings upon their staff, and we ask the blessings upon our mayor and his staff and the citizens of Mobile. Lord, we just pray for our first responders, keep them safe. And we pray for peace on our streets. We pray for the families of our first responders. Bless them and encourage them, Lord, knowing that we are all in God's hands and God loves us all. And we ask God's blessings upon us as we begin this meeting in Father, Son, and Holy Spirit. Amen.
Roll call, President Small.
Here.
Vice President Gregory.
Here.
Councilmember Penn. Councilmember Carroll.
Here.
Councilmember Reynolds.
Here.
Councilmember Dave.
Here.
Councilmember Jones.
Here.
Statement of rules.
And good morning, everyone.
Morning.
Good morning.
It's good to see everyone on this spring Tuesday morning. It feel like this Easter snap outside this morning. Kinda cool. And at this meeting, we do have rules. At this time, I ask if anyone has any type of electronic device, at this time, please put it on the off or the vibrated position. The off or vibrated position. Any person desiring to address the council must sign in indicating the resolution to ordinance, appeal, or public hearing agenda item before entering the meeting. When addressing the council, the speaker must state his or her name and address. Any person desiring to speak to the council on a non-agenda item must contact the City Clerk office no later than 2:00 PM on a Thursday prior to the council meeting. The such that he or she wishes to address must be identified and pertain to the City of Mobile business. Any person who has not given proper notice to the clerk office and wishes to speak on a non-agenda item would not be allowed to address the council. Each speaker is allowed three minutes to address the council. A bell was sounded to indicate the end of two minutes. One minute remains to summarize, and the second bell indicates the time has expired. When addressing the council, there will be no personal address to any individual councilperson. All statements are to be made to the chair, who I will recognize any councilmember who wishes to respond. To maintain decorum, there will be no undue applause and/or public outcry allowed. Madam Clerk?
Approval of minutes of April 12th.
Second.
Improperly moved to second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Communications from the mayor.
Good morning. It's good to see you here this morning. I have three things, three items on my agenda this morning. One is a proclamation for the Month of Military Child. The Month of Military Child. And the second would be, the chief will introduce the Officer of the Month. Chief Prime will do that, and then I'll follow up with a certificate of present, uh, presentation that I will give to our finance department. So first is Amber Beals here. Yes, Amber, if you don't mind approaching the podium, and I will read the proclamation. Amber is here representing Major General Williams Shane Lee, Brigadier General Phil Jolly, Colonel Tom Adams of the Army Reserve Ambassadors, who operate under Lieutenant General Jody J. Daniels, the Thirty-Fourth Chief of the Army Reserve, and Ninth Commanding General, U.S. Army Reserve Command. Amber, that's a whole lot that you're representing, okay?
There are heavy loads, sir.
Let's go, okay. So the proclamation reads, "Whereas the City of Mobile recognizes the selfless acts of service by military families as they help sustain our fighting forces, and whereas it is important to emphasize and recognize the critical role of military-connected youth while their loved ones serve our nation, and whereas ensuring military-connected youth are safe and supported in our schools and communities, our men and women in uniform can focus on the challenges and missions they face in the line of duty. And whereas the City of Mobile is honored to provide support to the military-connected youth of the active-duty Guard and Reserve, now therefore I, William S. Dimson, the Hundred-eighth Mayor of the City of Mobile, do hereby formally proclaim the month of April 2022 as Month of the Military Child." Amber, thank you for your service, and you're welcome to make a few remarks to the council there.
Thank you so much. I know oftentimes we think of military-connected families and youth as being connected to an installation, but you would be surprised that actually, in far more like count and numbers, military-connected families and children in the Guard and Reserve outweigh the active component by far. And you have a large population here in the City of Mobile of Reserve and Guard. So it is my honor to be here to accept this on their behalf, being a personal military-connected child myself and growing up in a military family. I bring that to the Army Reserve family programs in which we support all of our soldiers and families in purple, trying to make their lives a little better than the military families that I grew up with, and just making sure we make that culture. And just so you know that you, as the City of Mobile, to be honest with you, when you wrap around these Guard and Reserve soldiers and families, you make the Army Reserve, any branch of the component, any Reserve Guard or active component, you don't understand what that means to those families. So we truly appreciate the City of Mobile in taking the time to wrap around those families, even though a lot of times they're hiding in plain sight because they work and live exactly where you do, and they're not wearing the uniform at all times. So thank you so much for your time.
Mayor's staff, City Council, glad to see you here today. Today, the Mobile Police Department honors Christopher Culbertson as the Officer of the Month for March of 2022. He has approximately two years on the department. He's recognized for making significant drug-related arrests, finding suspects in possession of heroin, oxycodone, methamphetamine. He's apprehended several convicted felons, seized five stolen firearms, in addition to servicing over eighty-five calls in his V and making fifteen felony arrests, as well as twenty-three misdemeanor arrests. This is his actual second time making Officer of the Month, I think. He may probably be on a record heading toward getting it for a third time, which would be a record for the Mobile Police Department. I would just say this for this young officer here. He is the epitome of who we're looking for. I say that every time we come up here because the cream does definitely rise to the top. And at the end of the day, he represents attitude, confidence, service of the Mobile Police Department. And for that, the department wants to recognize him for a job well done.
Chief, that's very remarkable. Having been on the force about two years, and it's the second time for being Officer of the Month. Congratulations to you.
Thank you. And so, the next, I want to make some remarks about my finance department. And every year, the Mobile, the City of Mobile is required to compile and release a comprehensive annual financial report. It's known as the ACFA, or Annual Comprehensive Financial Report. It's publicly audited, submitted to the regulatory agencies like the U.S. Securities and Exchange Commission. It's a two-hundred-page document that lays out the City of Mobile's finances in significant detail, from revenues to expenditures. Anybody that's tried to read it, it puts you to sleep pretty quickly unless you're an accountant. But there's wealth of information in it. But for those who don't have an degree in accounting, because of the ACFA being a little overwhelming to read, since 2018, without, um, the necessity of following guidelines or the encouragement to do so, we decided that we were going to voluntarily produce what we call the Popular Annual Financial Report, and we call it the PAFRA. This is people who do not have accounting degrees, like the mayor, and like everybody on this row, except for Bob Holt, who is a finance major, so that you can understand the city finances. As I said, there's no requirement to produce this, but it's our effort to be transparent and to make it easy to understand where the tax dollars are coming from and where they're being spent. Both copies today are being presented to the City Council. I assume y'all have the ACFA show. I forget how big that one, the other one is. Yeah, so they're both available to the City Council today. They're also available on our website. But none of this could be possible without a dedicated finance department. And at this time, I would ask Rebecca Christiansen, who actually does this, for her to please come forward and her team. How many do you have here? Y'all can just stand, stand in place, if y'all would stand in place. Yeah. But both of our documents, both the ACFA and the PAFRA, have been, excuse me, have been recognized by the United States Government Finance Officers Association for receiving certificates of excellence. This is the third year in the road that the PAFRA received Gofra's Popular Annual Financial Reporting Award, and the thirty-fifth year that we've received the ACFA award. Our reviewers called the Mobile's 2021 PAFRA a beautiful report. I actually gave one to the chairman of the board, the CEO of Regions Bank. He read it over the weekend and called me and said that it is one of the best that he's ever read, that it's so simple, understandable, and that based on what he read, that obviously the city's in very strong financial conditions. So Rebecca, I'm gonna read this proclamation, and this is to all of those who sat back down, but it's not just Rebecca. And the certificate of recognition simply reads, "The Accounting Department is hereby officially recognized by the City of Mobile for the Outstanding Achievement Award presented by the Government Finance Officers Association for the PAFRA in fiscal year twenty, ending twenty, uh, excuse me, ending September 30th, 2020, done on this twenty-second day of March, done on this twenty..." Well, the date on this is wrong. We're supposed to do this the end of March. Anyway, so congratulations, Rebecca. And I'll let you make a few remarks on behalf of you and your team. And Bob, if she misses anything, I would expect you to fill in behind her, okay?
Absolutely. Good morning. As the mayor said, the ACFA is our formal financial document for the city. It's audited. It's, it can be an intimidating document, perhaps, for those who don't have an accounting background or especially a governmental accounting background. The contents and the format of the ACFA are prescribed by the accounting standards that rule governments. So we have limited flexibility in what we can include and how we can present in that document. So the, the PAFRA was becoming a, um, more popular theme amongst some government agencies and best practices for governments. So in 2018, we decided we want to undertake that type of report. So the 2021 PAFRA, which you have in front of you, is our fourth document. Each year, we try to make it a little better, a little more informative than the year before. So, and we hope that's what we have achieved this year. So we have submitted both the ACFA and the PAFRA again for the same awards that we received for last year's reports, and we anticipate receiving them again. There's a few key members of my staff I'd like to particularly thank. Scott Providence is our Deputy Comptroller for Accounting. Laura Angle is our Grants Compliance Manager in our Grants Management Department. Randy Threadgill is our Deputy Comptroller in Grants Management. And Pandora Cunningham is our Treasurer, who is not here today. But all of my staff are dedicated, highly qualified professionals who truly believe that the service we provide is a public service to our community. My skill sets may not be climbing into buildings while they're burning, but this is how I can serve my community, and I think we all feel that way. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Want us to go out?
Adoption of the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Improperly moved to second. End of discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Agenda is adopted.
Appeals. We have requests for wave of the noise ordinance on, uh, May the 28th, uh, on Spring Hill Avenue.
Uh, we're gonna just hold it over for one week? I get a second. Improperly moved in second. End of discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Laid over for one week.
We have requests for wave of the noise ordinance on May 7th at Lake Blad People's Stadium and April the 24th at Dodge Community Center.
So moved.
Second.
Improperly moved to second. End of discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Item passed.
Public hearings. Today is a public hearing to declare the structure at 3210 First Avenue of public nuisance and order demolished.
Just open up the public hearing for this particular property. If anyone present, you may do so now by coming down to the podium and stating your name and your address. If anyone present. If not, this public hearing is closed.
Presentation of petitions and other communications to the council. Denise Martin. Yeah, I call Denise Martin.
First giving honor to God to the mayor, councils, I say good morning. And in brother Christ, I stand before you because the bus-
Let me get, let me get your name and your address.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Denise Martin, 3660 Martha Court. All right. I'm, I'm here because the bus route is finna have changes. And most of the people that go to Walmart, go to Walmart through Route 7, and they finna change where the people have to ride three or two buses before they can get to Walmart. And in a day's time, that's seven dollars and fifty cent to ride. And I'm here speaking out because we wanted to stay as it is at going to Walmart, because some people don't want to ride the bus all the way down Highway 90 going to Tillman's Corner. That's a long ride and too far for some people to go that have disabilities and be trying to do their best for theirself. And another bus is called Airport Circulator. Some people go out there to, the airport bus don't go but so far, and you got to walk a long ways to go like to the hospital or wherever they doctor, they go out there to see or get physical help at, at strengthening them wherever they weak at. And in the past, they used to have meetings for us to come hear what they want to do, and we tell them what they change. Is it better for us or making it worse? And this is a picture of, uh, the, when they finna have a meeting and let you know to come, hear what they suggesting, and is it helping you or making it worse? And I have a list, a list of names of people who disagreeing with, excuse me, who are disagreeing with the changes finna happen. So I told them that I, the ones that cannot be here, I take your name and show them that the citizen of Mobile is concerned about Route 7 being changed and make it worse. Now, I have road, uh, Route 4, which is Spring Hill. It goes down Spring Hill, but it go way out to the camp and don't pick up nobody going there or coming there. If they make changes, change where you got buses going way out and it's not picking up nobody. And let it stay running in the areas where we got people that's trying to get around and do for theirself. Because if they change it, it making it hard on the people. And if anybody come visit us and see we can't get around, why would they want to come here and live if they don't have their own transportation? That's hard, making it hard and making the city look bad. But some of the people that's in office doing the, uh, changes, they need to get out and ride the bus and see how difficult it is to get to here to there. But we who been riding it, and like I have said, I've been riding it for a long time, and I wanted to be the one that speak out for the people because we sit back and complaining among ourselves, nothing indeed. So we put y'all in office for us, and I asked for y'all to help us continue to be able to get around and do for ourself. In Jesus' name I pray, and thank you for hearing me.
Yeah, thank you so much, Ms. Martin, for coming down. And what we learned in pre-council this morning, yeah, when it's less than twenty percent of the changes, it does not come to the council. Uh, Mr. Snowden had just gave you his card. He works with the Way Transit. Also, you've spoken about disability. Now, if someone is disabled, call Mr. Snowden. He just gave you his card, and they'll try to make some means to help that disabled person to get transportation and everything.
Okay, but some, excuse me, because some of us disabled ain't where we can move.
Yes, ma'am.
And if we want to continue to move on for ourself and know how to ride, and we know how to ride the bus, we want to do as much as we can for ourself.
Yes, Ms. Martin.
But it is some.
Ms. Martin, yeah, every case is different, and they look at each case different, you know, with different disabilities and stuff. But get in contact with Mr. Snowden and everything, okay? Thank you so much for coming down.
Thank you.
Take care now. Madam Clerk?
Paula Stather.
Good morning. My name is Paula Stather, and I live at 2529 Oakview Drive, 36606. I first became aware of the animal neglect and cruelty case at 1813 Halls Mill Road about two years ago. Of recent months, the situation has gotten worse, and a mutual friend of myself and a Halls Mill neighbor went to the city shelter to report it. An animal control officer came out on December 28th, 2021, and served the officer, served the owner with a citation telling her to take the dog to the vet for shots and stop chaining her to a fence. When the chain would kink, the dog would be unable to access her food and water. We have photographs of this. You should have them. Additionally, it was causing sores to her hind legs because she had to sit in her own urine and feces. Three weeks after this visit, I decided to go to the city shelter myself since the dog's situation remained unchanged. I spoke to Ms. Rasserman, the director, who told me she would send the same animal control officer right after he had his lunch. I spoke to her two days later, and she told me the dog had been visited and the situation was corrected. When I found out the situation was unchanged, subsequent calls to her went unanswered. Since the dog's situation was unchanged, I made a second visit to the city shelter during the week of 2/21. I presented another worker with a picture of the dog unable to access her food and water due to the chain being tangled, and you should have that. I was asked if I wanted a recheck and was told no one has been there since 12/28/21. On 2/25, Ms. Seattat, the neighbor, was scratched by the dog and treated by fire medics. When the police arrived, they confirmed no one has been here about this dog since 12/28. On 3/14, three members of the animal rescue community went to see Ms. Rasserman in order to discuss this dog as well as other issues. On the evening of 3/15, Ms. Seattat noticed the dog's chain was so tightly wound that it was choking her, causing her face and neck to swell. Additionally, there was a large horizontal weeping sore on her neck where her collar had rubbed the skin to the raw flesh, and you should have a photograph of that as well. On 3/16, Ms. Rasserman and the animal control officer came but refused to take the animal into custody upon the owner's arrival, saying she said she would take the dog to the vet. They then left. Twice this month, I have called 311 about this case. The first time, I was told the owner had been given a citation in March. On my second call on 4/11, I was told there was no further information. Please be aware, I am not coming here in a spirit of having anyone reprimanded or having their job. I'm just here to ask for your help for this animal and others like her. Thank you.
Let me ask you a question.
Yes, sir.
Last part of your statement, you say you called 311 twice. Did you call 311 before a month ago? I mean.
No, I did not. I went in person.
Okay, and, and that's for all the citizens here. It's best to call 311, but to always get documented. You always get your, a, uh, SRO number.
Yes.
And that would just tell us the history of it, because you're going straight to the animal control, and you might have an employee, just say this today, might be my last day, I don't care. But you always call 311 or 208-5311 and ask for a SRO number, which stands for Service Request Order Number. That keep a track of any type of city issue that it is. And so the city can always keep track of it. And so if, if it has to go to court, they have a record of all the times that you had called or your neighbors had called about a particular city issue.
Okay.
But always remember to dial 311. Just don't go straight to the department. Always dial 311. If you can't get, seem like you don't get the answer resolved from 311, then contact your councilperson. And your councilperson will help you along and everything. But I do appreciate you for doing what you have done so far. And if you have any additional questions, Mr. Snowden, he's overseas, our Animal Control Department. About to give you his card, and just go ahead and give him a call.
Thank you, sir.
Take care.
Thank you.
Darlene Martin.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Darlene Martin, and I live at 2411 Cross Street in the Africatown community. John 3:16, we all know it. It says, "For God so loved the world." So ask yourself, what have I given for what he has already given to me? As I told you a few weeks ago, when Jesus came out of the wilderness after forty days and faced his opposition, he did not use his words. He used his father's words. For the word of God says in Luke 12:48, "To whom much is given, much will be required." We must forsake our friends who aren't right, forsake ourselves who often isn't right, to do what is just right. Ask him who has allowed you to sit in the seats you are sitting in right now. What does he want you to do concerning this matter? If the right person is in the middle of your life, then you will make the right decision. If you don't, know this and rest assured, your red sea is coming. Lastly, don't forget that, yes, they did set him up, but he got up. Will you get up and stand for right? We will all know when the vote is taken, but manly. He who is the giver of every good and perfect gift will know. Now, I will say like Moses said, where this issue is concerned, I shall not return concerning this matter. Thank you.
Sylvia Reed. Following Sylvia Reed is Reverend Edna Allen.
This is Ms. Reed, present. Madam Clerk? Reverend Allen?
Reverend Edna Allen.
Good morning. I'm Reverend Edna Allen, a resident of District 7, and my address is 1763 East of Woods Drive, Mobile, Alabama. I'm here to speak about the current redistricting process. The challenge before us is most crucial- The challenge before us is most crucial, and the most crucial moment is transparency in redistricting. Transparency has been the most neglected element in the redistricting process reform based on research. A coalition of, of community groups from across the city came together to present number, a number of alternative redistricting maps. And today I stand before you asking that you review these maps. These maps provide a meaningful alternative to the redistricting, uh, map prepared by Mayor Simpson. And more importantly, the community maps meet the legal and moral obligations for the city. As we all know, the twenty-twenty, uh, US Census showed that the city of Mobile is now a majority people of color city, specifically with a majority of black population. This means that the city is required to redraw the current city council district map to reflect that and ensure that the black citizens of the city of Mobile finally are properly represented here in Government Plaza. If you haven't already, we urge you to review the, the maps, share them with your constituents, and consider them for passage. And if it is possible for us as a city to meet our obligations, do the right thing by the Voting Rights Act. Do the right things for the citizens and, and move our city forward. We can be one Mobile, not just some Mobile. It's time for us to walk the walk and not just talk the talk. Thank you.
Oren Davis. Following Oren Davis is Katie Herndon.
For the mayor and his staff and city council. I am Oren Davis. I reside at four-sixty-one Cedar Avenue, Mobile, Alabama. I come before you today to read a citizen's proclamation. Whereas the city of Mobile is now a black majority city and deserves to have a government that reflects its reality. Whereas the early draft of the mayor redistricting plan established a black majority in District Seven, it ignored the crucial issues of voting age. Whereas when the community called him out on this duplicity, he reduced the lines such that it reflected the barest minimum possible, a majority margin of only fifty-point-fifty-six percent. A gesture that smacks of tokenism. Whereas throughout this process, both the mayor and the city council repeatedly asked the communities for the communities' input. But when community organizations offered alternative maps with greater black majority margin, the council had all but ignored these alternatives. Whereas our country is experiencing waves of voter suppression laws, the likes of which we haven't seen in seventy-five years. Whereas the state of Alabama has one, has one of the worst records in this regards in any state of the union and the city of Mobile in any city. Whereas the mayor and the council have so far shown only a cold indifference in what the black people of this city want and need. And that the indifference is reflecting in policy making that go beyond, makings that go beyond the redistricting issue, perpetuating a poverty rate of higher than that of Chicago, New York, and Los Angeles. Therefore, a coalition of community organizations, including Stand Up Mobile, Waved in the, Waved in the Water, and the NAACP, and the IMA, and many local churches have come together to stand in a praying outside the doors of this chamber. We're praying for the city council that God goodness will invade the hearts and help them to go for, go for a fair and a no fear and fear-based selfishness. To also work on their conscience and light them the path of compassion, love, fairness, and justice that Jesus would have. We're praying that these prayers will do for the city council that they have not been able or unable to do for themselves. To stop clinging to power, stop clinging to the race patterns of the past that have disadvantaged people of color and cede their ways of choosing the right just for moral courses instead. We pray that you take this under consideration.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Davis.
Katie Herndon. Following Katie Herndon is Reggie Hill.
Good morning, my name is Katie Herndon. I reside at two oh five De Sales Avenue, Apartment C in District One. Around twenty-five percent of the city of Mobile's voting population voted in twenty-twenty-one municipal election. That is roughly thirty-four thousand people. That is the number of people who showed up and elected the mayor and the city council. That is not indicative of a city that feels empowered for the democratic process. That is not indicative of a city who gives the opportunity to all of its citizens to elect the candidates of their choice. I understand it is complicated and maybe even an uncomfortable situation for some. The city council has a tremendous opportunity to make a difference here. When a community doesn't feel appreciated or heard, we can expect an embarrassing turnout. What we hope for as a community striving to be united is a just and equal system. Not one in which there are few voting to elect and elite few. Mobile deserves better, and our children growing up in this beautiful city deserve better. We deserve one voice and one vote. Mobile is a majority black city, we all know that. The redistricting plan must reflect that. As I sat in church on Easter Sunday, thoughts flooded my mind on what I wanted to say today. The main word that kept bouncing around in my mind was hope. These fine people who come down to this city council week after week have hope. Hope that the people elected to serve, their constituents, will do the right thing. There is a groundswell of support for these new maps. The people of Mobile, both black and white, are rallying around these new maps simply because they are just and they represent a historic possibility for Mobile to become a new South city, a first step in deconstructing our racist past. Look, this issue has become simple at this point. Draw the lines so that the districts give a better opportunity to our black citizens. Give them a reasonable majority, give them a voice that can be heard. Currently, there are members of this amazing community in the atrium of Government Plaza together in prayer for this council to do the right thing. Wow, that is moving to me. And I'm so happy my daughter is here to witness this. She will remember this for the rest of her life. I will remember this for the rest of my life. So again, I ask the city council to approve one of the two new maps that has been submitted. Also, I ask that there be the promised community meetings in each district so citizens can ask questions and be heard. You have heard from many people of conscience in this chamber asking for simple justice. You have the opportunity to make history just by doing the right thing. Thank you for your time and God bless Mobile.
Thank you.
Reggie Hill regarding Resolutions zero-two, zero-one-nine, zero-twenty-one, and zero-twenty-two.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Citizens and stakeholders of Mobile, Reggie Hill, one thousand seven Center Street. Good morning. Um, rise to, uh, address those matters, zero-two dash zero-one-nine through zero-two dash, uh, zero-two-two. These, um, are items approved, excuse me, being proposed, um, by the representative from District Four. Um, I can't help but be reminded about the first time a couple of years ago when these matters came before, I remember the, uh, representative from District Five, working so tirelessly to change and amend these numbers here. Nice tie today, by the way. Um, and I want to apologize to the citizens. Uh, because of me coming down so consistently, I believe that's why we lost a hundred and twenty seconds. Um, I sent some information over, uh, to the city clerk's office, and I hope that each of you have received it, uh, some markups on what I believe we could do with Section Two of the Mobile Municipal Code. Um, for the record, I'm going to read through these and do my best in the given time uh, to share where I believe these markups should be. Uh, this was also received by the council attorney. Uh, I propose amending Section Two dash six-one-F to read. Uh, amendments of the city council are recorded in summary form, not verbatim. If council members desire that their comments on a particular subject be recorded in their entirety, the city clerk should be informed at the time the comments were made. I want to add in, uh, if members of the general public who have signed in for non-agenda items desire that their presentation or petition be recorded in its entirety, the city clerk to be informed when the written communication to address the council is submitted. All other speakers, including those addressing non-agenda items, uh, may submit comments for the record in writing, which must be received by the city clerk on or before two PM on Thursday following, uh, the regular meeting at which the person spoke. Uh, the reason for that is sometimes citizens do go back and read the minute and they want to know, uh, what it was that was addressed. And I think that is, um, should be considered for our information to be added in. I think that's very important if we're going to actually conduct this, the citizens' business. Uh, the next one I proposed was an amending to Section Two dash six-one, excuse me, Two dash six-two, uh, this is point one. Uh, interested parties of the authorized representatives wishing to address the council on non-agenda items uh, must submit in writing to the city clerk a, a request to address, um, the council identifying the subject matter to be discussed and the specific before it said question. I would like to say topic. And the reason why is because as each of you know, for years, people have submitted questions. We haven't given a response. So I think that we can get topic in there and that would be much better and more convenient for everyone. Uh, because it seems that people don't have the answers and instead of looking like something is out of order, uh, we could just have a topic discussed. The last part of that, it says, um, it must be received by the city clerk on or before two PM on Thursday preceding the regular council meeting at which the person desires to speak. I would ask that we add, unless the non-agenda items pertains to a matter that relates to city government but did not commence until after the above mentioned time for submitting the written communication has elapsed. There are things that happen within our city that should be brought to this, to this forum, and they might happen outside of the time that's allowed and citizens should be given that privilege. Um, if I may be granted additional, just one more point.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Hill, for coming down this, uh, this morning.
In the Section Two, since that's two-five, it actually says five minutes.
Thank you.
Ordinance is held over, sixty-one zero-one-five, ordinance to amend Chapter eleven for Chapter sixty-one, traffic for the Mobile City Code Low Speed Vehicle, entitled Low Speed Vehicle.
Move the law over one week.
So moved, I mean, second.
Improper moving the second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I'm just laid over.
Zero-two, zero-one-nine, ordinance to amend Section Two dash sixty-two-B and Two dash sixty-two-C of the Mobile City Code Communications with Council.
So moved.
Second.
Improper moving second, any discussion?
Uh, yes, sir, Mr. President.
Uh, Ms. Gregory.
I have an amendment to, um, this, which instead of saying, um, and Chris, you may need to help me on this, where it says the option of the committee chair to allow public comment should be to, option of the, or a poll of the committee members whether to allow public comment.
I'd, uh, I would, to get to your point, I would say, replace at the option of the committee chair with by majority vote of the committee member.
Second.
Improper moving second, any discussion? Um, I do have one discussion with that. I thank Ms. Gregory for bringing this, you know, to the council. And I see the pros and cons of this amendment. And my question is, if we only have two members that's present out of three members, then how would that be broken? Um, and I know it's probably that, and I would give, you know, I might not be able to get down to it right now. I would have sustained it because I do still, if it's two members and one says no, one says yea, then what? So on this one, I will be abstaining in my vote. Um, any other questions? Other discussions?
Uh, Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. President.
Um, it can be worded in a different way, you know, to accommodate only two members being present at a committee meeting. Although, I don't know what the requirement is to have a quorum at a committee meeting if, if you've only got two people present. I don't think you can.
It's two.
Oh, okay, it is two.
And that's my concern.
Uh, you know, it could, it could be worded in a way that, that any other, any other council people present can, you know, can join in, in a vote. That's not the amendment, but.
Yeah. Initially, I had thought to make it the entire council because normally all the council members come to a committee meeting. I said normally, so it doesn't always happen. That's why I limited it to three committee members. But either way, just to make it more inclusive of deciding how these committee meetings.
Any other discussion?
Um, one, one question.
Ms. Gregory.
I'm not sure if it's on zero-two, zero-one-nine or not, but Mr. Hill brought up the idea of when people come to the podium to speak, instead of saying question, make it topic. And that is actually something that I had thought about too, Chris. I'm not sure which one that goes under. But I think that would make it clearer for us to say topic rather than question.
Which one are we talking about?
I'm not sure if it's which one of these that falls under.
Well, um.
Mr. President.
Hold on, Mr. Reynolds, let Ms. Gregory in. We trying to figure that out, y'all.
Yeah, it's just the one.
All right, Mr. Reynolds.
Yeah, uh, he may be talking about the, uh, amendment in Section Two dash sixty-two A, number one. Where it says, "Single-word descriptions or topics are insufficient. The request must contain enough information so that the council will have enough information to adequately respond if desired."
Well, no, it's when, when someone comes to the podium to address us. Instead of saying question, just make it topic.
Ms. Davis.
That's in before us. Before us is the amendment.
Yeah, but it's, but it's inserted in one of those. I just didn't know which one.
Let's go ahead and vote on the amendment, then we go back to Ms. Gregory's question. Okay, and. Two, oh-two dash oh-two-one. Let's vote on the amendment, then we come back to Ms. Gregory's question, okay? We vote, in that other discussion on Ms. Gregory, First Amendment.
Yeah, and just one more point of discussion on, uh, zero-two, zero-one-nine. Uh, since it's three people per, per committee and only two are there and the two disagree, then the decision goes back to the chair, correct, Chris? Is that not how it works?
If there's a vote, you gotta have two.
Right.
But regardless.
But if, but if only two people are there for the committee meeting and they disagree on how it should be handled, doesn't the discretion go back to the chair?
If it's gonna be a vote, you gotta have the two. Now, if there's nothing about a vote, then I guess it kind of would. That's what's been happening.
Yeah, could we just reword the amendment to state that so that it's clear? If only two people show up for a committee meeting and they poll the committee members and there are only two there about allowing public comment, if only, and if the two people can't agree, then the decision goes back to the chair.
You could say, um, at the end of the sentence, provided, however, if there's only two there, then it's the committee chair's decision. Something along those lines that sound, you know, better. Yeah, so that would be another amendment.
Should I just withdraw the other amendment and then make it, make that the amendment?
Well, well, you can. It's a different amendment, so y'all could vote on that. If it doesn't work, then you can make another amendment. All right, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Opposed.
Astain.
Opposed.
Going back to the ordinance. Uh, in the. Going back to the ordinance, uh, end of discussion.
Uh, yes, Mr. President.
Ms. Gregory.
Uh, I'd like to propose we reword the amendment we were just talking about to say, uh, if the.
You don't mean it?
If two, if only two committee members are there and they disagree, then the decision goes to the chair.
Second.
Praze it.
Pardon me?
You want me to praise it?
Yeah, praise it, please.
All right, so if I think I'm understanding this, see, you would say, um, "Made by majority vote of the committee members, comma, or at the option of the committee chair if only two members are present."
And they can't agree. Because if, if two committee members are there, we can still meet and we can still vote anyway.
Well, yeah, but if the vote fails, then it's gonna happen anyway.
Then we go back, then go back to the chair.
So, or at the option of the committee chair, if only two committee members are present. And cannot agree. Okay. So the amendment is, uh, "May, comma, by majority vote of the committee members, comma, or at the option of the committee chair if only two committee members are present and cannot agree, comma." And then it goes on like it was already written.
Second.
Improperly moved in second, end of discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Opposed.
Astain. Going back to the original. End of discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Upstain, one extension.
All right, pass. About a flirt.
Um, am I taking the?
Take it separate.
Okay, zero-two zero-two zero, ordinance to amend section two dash sixty-one of the Mobile City Code Rules of Debate.
So moved.
Second.
Improperly moved in second, end of discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Passes.
Zero-two zero-two-one, ordinance to amend section two dash sixty-two A, Mobile City Code Communications with Council.
So moved.
Second.
Improperly moved in second, end of discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Passes.
Zero-two zero-two-two, ordinance to amend section two dash sixty-two A of the City Code Communications with Council.
Move the table.
Second.
Improperly moved in second, end of discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Out on the table.
Sixty-four zero-two-three, rezoned property located at fifty-four hundred Hamilton Boulevard from I-two to I-one.
So moved.
Improperly moved in second, end of discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Passes.
Sixty-four zero-two-four, rezoned property located at thirty fifteen and thirty nineteen, Pleasant Valley Road from R-one to R-three.
So moved.
Improperly moved in second, end of discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Out on passes.
Consent resolutions held over, forty-one five-seven, declare the structure at two-twelve Norman Street a public nuisance and order it demolished.
Um, Mr. President, uh, uh, David, are you here? Uh, I got your text a little while ago asking that we declared a public nuisance today and grant Mrs. Jackson Johnson two months in order to get her permit, but the Nuisance Abatement Act, does it act in that manner?
What I said, um, sorry, you can hear me now?
I can hear you.
Yeah. What I'm suggesting is that if it's declared today, I have the flexibility to stop all further action and I'm willing to do that to allow Ms. Jackson to, to further pursue her repair permit. I did have a chance to speak with her, with her this morning and that is what she wants to do. Um, this would give her the additional time, but it also gives council time within the statute in the city code of one-hundred-and-twenty days to take action. Thursday of this week, we're at that one-hundred-and-twenty days from when I sent out the first forty-five day notice of compliance.
So, uh, it wasn't clear in my mind, are we asking to restart the process today?
If no action is taken today, then yes, I would have to restart the process.
Um, you know, my concern right here is the same concern we had at pre-council.
Hold, hold up for Mr. Carol. Mr. Archer, don't we need, since the mail, the clerk read is out, don't we need to just bring this to the table and finish the discussion? I apologize, uh, to the, um, to my council colleagues and to the ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, properly moved in second, end of discussion. And again, I do apologize, Mr. Doc Mark.
So, uh, it's my understanding, though, that this could get lost in process and she could lose the house or lose the structure if she can't get the, her resources in order within sixty days.
At, at, at the end of the sixty days, my intention is to look to see if a permit is issued, number one, and number two, the second part would be, is there active repair work occurring on, on site? And if those two conditions are met, then I would stop the process, allowing the building permit department to follow through with the repairs.
Well, that's not the matter of contention. The matter of contention is the ability to get architectural drawings done at the request of the permit department that ex, that may extend that time past for sixty days and she may not be able to muster those resources as quickly as the city would like because of her standing. So if, if I go your route, then she stands the chance to lose because she can't move as swiftly financially as the city would like.
And, Mr. Carroll, that's, that's your decision in the end on the council and how you would like to move forward, but I, I do wanna reaffirm that we do have an unsafe structure. That is, the roof is collapsing and this is not only affecting the property owner, but the adjacent property owners. And, and that's why we are here before you and, and if you decide to take action, we will move forward, giving every consideration to the property owner, a chance to get a permit to repair the structure. Now, there, there's another suggestion that possibly declaring it today and then holding off, that, that declaration goes in effect in sixty days or seventy days, ninety days. Um, that's gonna be something that the legal department really needs to discuss. Can we change that resolution?
Uh, that's actually a really good suggestion, so you can, you can hold off. You can hold. And you can make it effective at a, at a later date.
Uh, correct, that, that way we're within the statutory limits of the one-hundred-and-twenty days. Council has a resolution, they have taken action, but that declaration of a public nuisance and the order to demolish would be delayed. We have a public nuisance declared, but the order to demolish could be set sixty, ninety days, um, whatever that you would choose.
Mr. President.
Uh, hold on, Mr. Reynolds. Uh, I'm trying to think this out in my head, what's the best solution for the property owner who's trying with all their might to save a family piece of property here? Uh, I, if, if, if we, if we table it today and restart it, we're looking at a hundred-and-twenty days, correct? Or not?
If, if no action is taken today, yes. I'm, I'm looking at serving a new certified mail notice with a forty-five day correction notice and that starts the process over. So fifty days after when that notice is sent out, and it may be thirty days, it may be reasonable for me to pause thirty to sixty days to see how the permit process plays out. But if there's no action, then yes, we will resend the notice fifty days from that notice being sent, fifty to sixty days, we'll be back here for a public.
Is there a way to extend the time long enough with declaring the nuisance today?
I think the, the second option would be the best, would be make the declaration of a public nuisance, but the order to demolish would go in effect thirty, sixty, ninety days, whatever you set.
Chris, I ask you a question. What is the cost to your department or the city to?
Uh, and the notice is being sent out by certified mail, so it's just a certified mail cost, return receipt, so we're looking minor amount. In this case, we only have one property owner, whereas some cases we have up to thirty-two, so the cost varies with each application and then we will actually post it on the property again. So in this particular situation, it's a minimal cost of just a certified return receipt mailing for one person.
So in essence, if we, if I ask the council to table this today to give her additional time, we're only talking about time?
No, no. So, so Mr. Arlidge asked a really good question, so we're not just talking about time. It's a good question, but we're talking about time, we're talking about the resources it takes for Mr. Dauphin Box folks to muster, we're talking about the amount of time that, that we're going to have this property still be dilapidated. And then the biggest reason is, is the whole, the whole reason we track this is because the devaluation of the adjacent property owners and what you deal with there. So ju, just wanna say, if, if we wanna push it back ninety days, that's permissible, or if you all don't wanna act today, that is up to the council. We, we can't make it go forward, but our option would be is to give Mr. Dauphin Box and his, his folks the ability to say, if in ninety days this isn't done, we can move forward, but we'll do everything we can to work with the property owner. Our goal is to remedy the nuisance, not demo. So if we can help the property owner move towards permitting and revisit and rebuild the structure, then that is something we wanna compel and be able to do. But we don't want to leave, you know, that hundred-and-twenty days out there, restart and then have this exact same conversation again and have to remarshall our resources in that multiple months' time.
All right, um, this, this, this is what I've decided. Um, let's declare the nuisance today, give the homeowner, property owner ninety days. All right, um, can, dude. It needs to be an amendment.
I'm, I'm about to ask, do I need to make an amendment today?
Yes.
Once before you might amend, Mr. Carroll, Mr. Reynolds?
Um, I'm fine, Mr. President.
Okay, Mr. Carroll.
Uh, Mr. President, I mean, Mr. President, um, I move to amend the, the ordinance and state that, uh, we declare it a nuisance today and grant the homeowner ninety days to acquire the permit.
Uh, second, um, just a question with that, um, Mr. Doc Mark, you said it's affecting the next-door neighbors, correct? Cause my, my question is, coming to my head is, well, if there's an emergency situation between now and ninety days.
Currently at the time, the, the structure is not giving any, any indication that it's gonna cross property lines. But it, the roof is collapsing. So it's collapsing within the structure.
Within the structure, okay. We got a, a motion and a second on the amendment, end of discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Amendment passes, going back to the original, all in, end of discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Passes.
CIP resolutions held over, twenty-one three-one-nine, authorized contract with James Adams and Sons Construction for Drainage Group E.
So moved.
Second.
Improperly moved in second, end of discussion.
Uh, Mr. President.
Uh, Mr. Jones and Mr. Reynolds.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just one question, I see districts one, two, three, four, six and seven, does this include the, um, the drainage and regency subdivision? Is this on that contract? The, the one on the twenty-one three-one-nine? The one-point-three-million low-paid contract?
I didn't, I didn't bring the list with me, um, but I, I can get that answer to you and right after this.
Yeah, I'd like to, thank you.
Mr. Reynolds?
Uh, yes, sir, Mr. President, I just wanted to take an opportunity to, to let the citizens know that here's a million-three going to drainage repairs throughout the city. A large portion of this is going into District Four and I wanna commend the administration for putting this together and taking action in the right way, as far as I'm concerned, with spending taxpayer money in the right thing. So thank y'all.
Any other discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Resolution passed.
Resolutions held over. Are there any objections to any of these? I'll take them all together. Zero-one three-twenty, authorized agreement with Jonathan Ames to provide tennis lessons and clinics for Parks Recreation Department. Zero-eight three-two-one, approved purchase order to Harrell's for fertilizer for Azalea City Golf Course. Zero-eight three-two-two, approved purchase order for Image Trend for annual license renewal for EMS data software. Zero-eight zero, zero-eight three-two-three, approved purchase order to Hayworth for furniture for, um, Mobile Police Department, First Precinct. Zero-eight three-two-four, approved purchase order to Stevens Ford for, uh, Ford Expositions. Zero-eight three-two-five, approved purchase order to Donna U. Chevrolet for Tahoe Police Package. Zero-nine three-two-six, approved transfer funds from General Fund to Public Services Maintenance Department. Twenty-one three-two-seven, authorized contract amendment for one-year renewal with Osprey Initiative for removal of floatable litter on Dog River and Three Mile Watershed. Twenty-one three-two-eight, authorized contract with McCory and Williams for Ashland Place Drainage. Thirty-seven three-two-nine and three-thirty are considering approval for certificate of public convenience and necessity to MK Non-Emergency Medical Transfer Port to operate a shuttle service and for a certificate of public convenience and necessity to Ophir Global LLC doing business as John Henry Transportation to operate a sedan service.
So moved.
Second.
Improperly moved in second, end of discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Resolution passes.
Ordinance is being introduced, zero-one zero-two-five through zero-one zero-two-six.
For council rules, these ordinances will be laid over for one week.
Consent resolutions being introduced, zero-three three-three-one through sixty-three-three-nine.
By council rules, these resolutions will also be laid over for one week.
This is consent.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry about that. So moved. Uh, move to waive the rules in order to, uh, consider these resolutions immediately.
Second. Improperly moved in second, end of discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? About a flirt?
Zero-three three-three-one, reappoint William Sawyer and appoint Vicki Lewis to the Mobile Civic Center Advisory Board. Zero-nine three-three-two, reallocate money from District Seven discretionary funds to Public Services Sanitation Department for debris removal in the Summer Place Subdivision. Thirty-one three-three-three, authorize Samir to accept grant funding from ADM through the Mobile County Commission for pickup and disposal of scrap tires as part of the right-of-way scrap tire removal program, no local match. Forty-three-three-four, declare the struc, structure at thirty-two-ten First Avenue a public nuisance and order it demolished. Fifty-eight three-three-five, declare the weeds, declare weeds noxious, weed lean group sixteen-twenty-seven. Sixty-three-three-six, approve award a special bonus to the Officer of the Month. Sixty-three-three-seven, three-three-eight, three-three-nine are determining appropriations to Pac Theater Company Foundation, Family Center of Mobile doing business as Life Line Counseling Services and Dream Hunters serve a public purpose and authorized payment.
So moved.
Second.
Improperly moved in second, end of discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Passes.
Resolutions being introduced, zero-eight three-fourty through twenty-one three-four-four.
By council rules, these resolutions will lay over for one week.
Call for public carings, forty-one three-four-five, call for public carrying to consider approval of a certificate of public convenience and necessity to Taylor's House of Camellias to operate a shuttle service scheduled May third. Forty-one three-four-six, call for public carrying to rezon property located at the east side of Hillcrest Road, three-hundred-and-twenty-six feet, uh, of, of Osh, uh, of Oshere Road from B-two to R-one scheduled May seventeenth.
So moved.
Improperly moved in second, end of discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Subcommittee hearings called.
Announcements.
Uh, District Four, Mr. Reynolds?
No announcements.
District Six, Councilman Jones. Turn your mic on.
Again, thank you. Um, just wanna say thank you to, uh, Camp Snowden for setting up the city council meeting yesterday at the US, US Coast Guard Aviation Training Center. What a great visit and, uh, just showed us truly the, the capabilities that, that they possess to keep our citizens safe, um, as well as, um, just what they bring to the table in Mobile and, and the funding. So thank you for that, what a, what a great time to visit there. Had a lot of conversations. Um, had a lot of conversations this last week with, uh, my colleagues, and, uh, I've asked the, the mayor's administration, go ahead and, and get the annexation maps ready and bring them up, um, it, it's time to have that discussion instead of having multiple conversations on so many maps, let's bring the map that matters with annexation to the table, and, you know, we'll do the consultants, we'll do the, the polarization studies with that map, instead of having to, to spend the time, resources, and efforts to do it twice. So look forward to that conversation as we move forward, thank you.
Uh, District Two, Councilman Carroll?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President, um, for those in the community that have been really involved in helping to, uh, vet and offer another map on redistricting, uh, as it relates to the census from twenty-twenty for the city of Mobile. Uh, today on the agenda were two ordinances for version one and for version two. Uh, those ordinances are there because the members of the council have heard your concerns, and they are aware that the citizens of the city want to be heard as it, as it reflects redistricting. Uh, this morning during pre-council, they both were assigned to committee, and that date is May third, uh, it is Tuesday, May third, I think that's roughly two or three weeks from now, it will be immediately after this meeting upstairs in the conference, the council conference room, unless there's a, uh, population to hear the committee meeting so large that we need to host it down here at that time. Uh, if there is any input to those maps other than what I have seen, heard, and read, please, as a community, get it in to your councilperson or to me or whoever else, uh, I do appreciate the council allowing, uh, these two ordinances to be heard and reviewed by us with, uh, consideration. Uh, the other thing is, is that, uh, I need to thank United Way for hosting yesterday's meeting on the homeless and, uh, having so many different member agencies in one room to start coordinating services. Uh, as you all are aware, there was an ordinance on this council's agenda not too long ago, uh, that, uh, was inadvertently affected some of our homelessness, and the question arose is, where do they go? So I've asked that group, uh, the question, where do they go? How do we create that? And then how do we coordinate services among, amongst all the homeless groups? I learned today that Councilmember Gregory also has an initiative that she's trying to push, push to, but I hope that we can all collaborate to make sure that we come up with a way to make this palatable to everyone so that in the future, if we do have a situation that arises, that we do have someone, somewhere for people to go and some way to help them at the same time. Thirdly, I have a series of community meetings coming up, and the dates will be published, uh, in my newsletter, um, the dates start, I believe it's the last Tuesday of this month, and they continue on for, uh, four weeks, and they will cover every inch of the district, and they will talk about redistricting, uh, they will talk about housing and the nuisance abatement and how we can save properties also. Uh, you know, in my mind, the house that we talked about today, if it had have been in Oakley or Church Street East or, or in Old Dolphin Way, it would have been a fight over because of the rule in the historic community about not tearing down a historic structure. Some of the houses in the campground or in the bottom are just as old or even older than some of the structures that we're saving in our, in our historic districts, so look forward to those meetings. Also, I have asked, uh, Ben Raines, uh, for those of you guys who have not heard Ben's, Ben talked about his book, but the most important thing is that Ben talks about Africa Town and the found, finding of the clotilde, but he talks more about the history and his presentation of the community and a group of people that were brought here on the last slave ship. We're going to host a meeting in Africa Town in May, I believe it's either the first week or second week in May, and I am, uh, asking that you all come out and hear about how the clotilde was found and where it was found and the process that it went through, and also how, uh, Mobile relates to the rest of the world, except, especially West, West Africa, Beni and Beni. Mr. President, that concludes my announcements.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Carroll. District Five, Councilman Dave. All right, and District Seven, Donald, I mean, uh, Vice President Gregory.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to thank everyone, um, in the Neighborhood and Community Development Department for coming to Mobile Terrace last weekend to help give out applications in person for, uh, some grant money that's available, is the ARP money to work on roofs right now, and a reminder that April twenty-ninth is the deadline to fill out applications for this grant money. But it was a really good opportunity for people to come in person and have their questions answered in person, uh, to help the process move along a little quicker, and I think also provided some input so that people were not as confused. Thank you to everyone who came, really appreciate, um, the New Jerusalem Baptist Church for hosting the event as well. Coming up this weekend, on April twenty-third, on Saturday, there will be a job fair in Mobile Terrace, it will be held at the corner of Lincoln and Third Street. Walmart is one of the companies that is coming, so if you know anyone looking for a job, needs a job, please come on out and take advantage of this job fair in Mobile Terrace. Um, also, smoke alarms, um, the fire department is getting ready to put in free smoke alarms in various neighborhoods in District Seven, that is Hillsdale, Miller Ring Road, Athie, Greenway, and Mobile Terrace. If you need a smoke alarm, all you have to do is call the number, it is two zero eight five 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 five. I've put this out in my newsletter, um, I have texted it to the community action groups and homeowners associations in these areas to remind everyone to do this, a great opportunity, the fire department comes and does it for free. So again, if you know anyone in these neighborhoods, please pass the word along so that they can take advantage of this opportunity. I too want to thank, um, Joe Snowden and everyone out at ATC for the tour yesterday. Um, we got to take advantage of something that very few people ever really get to do, and that is to get in one of those simulators and see what, at least get a little bit of a taste of what it's like to fly one of these helicopters. It was a great opportunity for, for all of us. And I too attended the meeting yesterday hosted by United Way. Uh, we got to listen to and see and meet, in some cases, providers, um, throughout the city, those folks and organizations that provide services to homeless people, uh, a really good opportunity for all of us, and I think it just really shows us, um, the opportunities that are there as well as the providers that are there, but also the need for some sort of effort to put everybody together so that we know exactly, you know, where the funding is, what the services are, and what the needs are, to better give us an idea of where the gaps are. But I really appreciate them coming together and working together and realizing that we all do need to be inclusive in this and work together for the best of everyone involved. Um, I think that is it, uh, Mr. President, I appreciate the opportunity.
Uh, thank you, Donald, I, I mean, it's, uh, Gregory. And to, uh, the citizens of District Three, um, also I'd like to, uh, kick it back behind some of my colleagues and thank, um, Mr. Snowden for, uh, taking us out on yesterday, and also like to thank Ms. Keisha Brown too for assisting, you know, uh, Mr. Snowden making this yesterday a great success. Uh, I had asked the clerk to, uh, write a thank you note on behalf of the councilmembers that went, but also, um, out of clerk, if you can add in there, encouraging the Coast Guard to, uh, you know, get it involved into the schools, I failed to mention that on yesterday, because what we saw and experienced on yesterday, many of our public school, uh, students need to experience that. Yesterday was a big opening, eye opening for me, and with the food that came along with the, uh, tour, I probably would have joined the Coast Guard myself and everything. But, uh, again, yesterday was a great day, and, um, citizens really, really need to know what's going on in the backyard of Mobile, and, uh, yesterday was a big eye opening, what the Coast Guard actually does and how they represent the city of Mobile. Also, I'd like to thank the, uh, many residents that came out this past Saturday, uh, special thanks to, uh, Franklin Premier and Health and Drug, also, uh, Councilman William Carroll and Cap Al-Pasai, paternity, uh, Chris McCream, uh, the, uh, Mobile Police Explorium, the Inter-City Mission, uh, also, uh, Judge Home Witten and others who have, the Strikers Club, it was many groups that had participated this past weekend for District Three Eighth Annual Easter Egg Hunt, it was a, uh, great success. Uh, we had beautiful weather, it started getting cloudy and lighting towards around about four o'clock, but it was, it was good enough for us to have a great success of a, uh, Easter egg hunt on this past Saturday, and looking forward to having it on next year. Also, uh, this coming Saturday, uh, from nine AM until noon, Revitalize DIP will be hosting a litter cleanup. Um, this cleanup will start at B C Urine High School, registration will start at eight fifteen AM with the cleanup from nine AM until noon. Uh, again, this litter cleanup is being, uh, uh, sponsored by Revitalize DIP, and also, uh, the city is also coordinating with this dip cleanup on this coming Saturday. Actually, um, it is a, uh, contest, um, they are entering the Dub Your Community as a team and striving to win, uh, fifteen hundred dollars for beautification. Again, this would take place on this coming, uh, Saturday, um, which is, uh, April the twenty-third from nine AM to noon, inviting all these, uh, citizens, especially in the South DIP area to come out this coming Saturday. Also Saturday, uh, will be a, uh, RV Community Day, uh, which will be at the, uh, um, on the corners of Dubal and Aldridge Street, uh, there will be provided voter registration, job training and employment, and counseling services for family financial and crisis services and refreshment and music will be provided. Again, inviting all the citizens around the RV community, Maysville area, and Oakdale and Downey Bay to come out this coming Saturday from ten eight to one o'clock PM for, uh, Community Day. Again, um, they striving for learn, connect, and share. And also citizens of District Three, we will have our extreme district meeting on next Tuesday, um, April the twenty-sixth at six o'clock PM. Uh, Chris Curry, uh, the CEO, President of the Airport Authority is hosting us, many citizens have been questioning and acquiring about the airport, and there's no better way from getting it from the horse's mouth, uh, this is Mr. Chris Curry. Also, it's give these citizens the opportunity to see what's in our backyard, many citizens have not been to the downtown airport. Again, for all of District Three citizens, residents, please come out next Tuesday, August, excuse me, April the twenty-sixth at six o'clock PM at the downtown airport, which is on Michigan Avenue, again, to learn more about the airport and what's going on in our district. Is there anything else from this council? Anything from the administration?
Motion to adjourn.
Proper to move in second, in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?